So you obviously don't need them for driving then?
Huh?
You don't need them for driving?
No.
Okay, good. I would say if so, we'd let you leave first.
I'm seeing you really well.
Really? Okay.
I just can't, just...
Good afternoon.
You know, anymore, I either forget my hearing aids or my glasses. One's just as bad as the other.
Okay, we are ready to begin. I will call the meeting of the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District to order. May we have a roll call?
Um, first, I'll clarify this...
Have you, have you... The confirmation that the Kansas Open Meetings Act required notice has been provided?
Yes. And roll call, Bill Longby?
Here.
Tom Toll?
Yo.
Carl Esping?
Here.
Greg Lenkowitz?
Here.
Trent Davis?
Here.
Mike Hoppeck? And Jerry Ivey?
Here.
Thank you. We are going to adjust the agenda a little bit today. So we are going to begin with approval of the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 meeting.
Ready for a motion? I move the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 minute meeting be approved.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That will bring us to new business. Approval of operations agreement with the Kansas Division of Water Resources. Ms. Tasker.
Thank you, Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. We're hoping to bring on Richard Rockle from the Kansas Water Office. If not, I'll work my way through it.
Okay.
Since we're on a...
Are we working to get him on?
They're this close. Okay, so I'll just give a little bit of background then to get us started. The Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District was incorporated in 2016 and at that same time in December, we developed a contract to purchase water from the Kansas Water Office. The special access district has two members. One is the City of Slina and the other is the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Irrigation District. Purpose of the access district was really to give us the opportunity to use the surface water along the Smoky Hill River to back up water storage rights for all users that wanted to. It's voluntary. You don't have to be in the district if you choose not to. And it includes irrigation district, municipalities, industries, and recreational water. Today, we're going to talk about the operation agreement and basically it implements some policies and responsibilities regarding the coordination, operation management, and protection of releases from Canoplis Lake. One has been to me to target flow at the Menter Gage and the second was to only release the amount of water that's needed downstream and be able to hold as much water in the reservoir as we can. And at this time, we're looking to see if Richard has got on. Thank yous. Okay. He got on by YouTube, but I don't know if he got on by Zoom. Let's see. Is it available now, Scott? Okay. I don't think they can talk to us in YouTube, can they? That's what my thought was. Says he's still waiting on Zoom. Okay.
Okay, Martha, can you hear me now?
Yes. We, I did a quick, brief history of the operations agreement and Richard Rockle is the Public Water Supply Program Manager for the Kansas Water Office. He recently took Nathan Westrup's position, so I think he might be about two or three months into his current job. Yes, we can hear you. Can you hear us?
I'm unable to hear you if you're saying anything here.
How about now?
Yeah, there I got you, there I got you.
I just introduced you, so feel free to say anything about yourself and then I'll turn it over to you to go through the agreement and a couple of changes that are proposed.
Okay, yeah, my name is Richard Rockle. I'm with the Kansas Water Office. I'm the Public Water Supply Programs Manager here, so work through operations agreement, reservoir water supply modeling, and interests regarding the state storage that is contracted through the federal reservoirs. And is there a potentially, would you like me to share a copy of my screen and my document, Martha, or does everyone have it there?
They all have the document in their packet. Would you prefer to have it on the screen or look in your packet? In the packet would, or on the screen would be fine then. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, and if anyone has any questions on this or what a change is entailing or, you know, you just want to stop me and get a little more explanation, please just feel free to let me know. As Martha was saying, this is the first redraft of the original operations district agreement. We usually let these run for about five years or so and the old one will stay in effect until the new one is approved. This current draft, it has been approved and accepted by the Chief Engineer of the Division of Water Resources and then my Director, the Director of the Kansas Water Office, has reviewed it. So I think we're pretty well on our path to getting this enacted as long as you all are okay with it and concur with the changes. Let's take a time, I'll kind of cruise right through some of these changes here. So really, this first page, this table, this is just an updating of what the current projection or current storage is and what the future 2044 storage would be. Since the original operations district or access agreement, there was a newer survey that came online, so we are using that newer survey. So we have these future projections based off of the volume change from those prior surveys incorporating that newer survey. No real other changes other than there's a little explanation here of the statutes that government document, the reasoning for the access district and the support coming out of the water plan. We'll really get down here into these operations and what this kind of means for you all. So I think, you know, this being the first operations agreement, there was a little bit of learning here of what was going to be needed to kind of fulfill all the various needs and the interests depending on some of the lower river users have a little bit different needs than the upper river users and how to create a document that gives us that flexibility to kind of address all those needs and attempt to fulfill the needs of the access district. So I would say the main thing here, yeah, it specifies these lessons learned and that this target flow may exceed that 20 CFS. And really what that means is it gives us this flexibility and this is the flexibility we're actually using right now of once we start to see declining flow coming out of the reservoir, even if it's in flood storage, once we start seeing declining flow there, once we start seeing declining flow in the river at the Menter Gage or throughout the system, then we can use that as what's called an operational trigger. Operational trigger, really that just means we start, we have an increased communication with all the parties, just so everyone knows that the river's drying out, reservoir storage will be, start to be used, and that we can start to talk to the Division of Water Resources of if there needs to be any water rights administration or if there's going to be insufficient natural flows to go around. Right now, I think this has been working out. We basically send our weekly sort of time step email, ask everyone what their demand needs are, if there are any issues, if they need any additional water, and then we communicate and convey that to the Corps of Engineers to carry out the changes of the reservoir. What else do we have here? Yeah, it operate, again, references this operational trigger and a little worded, a little weird here. Operational trigger is stream flow less than 10 CFS greater than these monthly values. What this is, this is the minimum release schedule that comes from the, for the reservoir from the Corps of Engineers. So basically, we're putting a trigger as when there's less than 10 CFS of what the minimum would be. And this is just kind of an indicator that we're getting a little dry, we might need to make some operational decisions and make a decision of if we want to use access district storage or not, or check in on, you know, what the needs are for the access storage. Scroll on through here. Again, everything, most of this is remaining the same. Here's this table I was referencing, so this is the, basically for July to sort of explain this is that operational trigger would be when we are basically below 60 CFS coming out of the reservoir here. So we hit that operational trigger a few weeks ago and we initiated the weekly communications and we have begun requesting the releases to support those flows. I believe that will be, I think that's about the majority of the changes that come out of this. I don't know if anyone has any specific questions about operations agreements or why we need to do this or anything of those terms. I guess one way I view the operations agreement is this is a way that it really kind of allows like that input coming in from the stakeholders and those that have a more local interest in the storage to communicate up to the state of what your needs are for carrying out and making your... Hold your questions since I think I was kind of supposed to go to 3:30 here, so...
Richard, what are we, are we releasing from the lake right now through the gates?
Right now, we are releasing through the gates and through the weir. So we are still technically in flood storage and in flood storage, it will kind of come out on its own. However, not enough was coming out through the weir, so we did have to increase the gate release.
So you don't know, are we, if we're releasing the 50 CFS yet through the gates?
Well, we, just through the weir itself, we were declining below the 60 CFS, so we had to request that the gate, gate release be increased so we could maintain that. And then through communications with the access district, we pushed that up to around a 70 CFS target coming out of the reservoir. So as the flood pool decreases, that means less water is going to be coming out of the weir and that the gate release will need to be increased.
Okay.
So Commissioners, as a little bit of background and perspective, during the drought of 2006, we didn't have an agreement in place, nor did we have really dialogue in place between the city, the irrigators, or the Corps of Engineers. And so we were dependent on the operations manual as administered by, as put out by the Corps and administered by the Kansas Water Office. We became aware in the middle of that drought that Kansas Water Office was actually recommending reducing the releases to try to preserve water in the reservoir. We, that's when our dialogue started. Having this, having the assurance district in place, having the irrigation district in place, having the agreement in place, and then this ongoing dialogue is so much further along and some, much more proactive and collaborative than what we found ourselves in 2006. We did have to buy the assurance water, which was part of our drought study and our water master planning, but by having done that and then working with the irrigators, I think we have a really good operation in place that is more holistic, more proactive, and gets all the parties' interests accounted for.
So last I checked, the reservoir was about one foot above conservation. Is it maintaining that level? Does anyone know?
It's, it's a half a foot over right now. Little over.
Yeah, it is, at the current release rate, it is declining. We probably have maybe a week and a half, two weeks where we'll have the benefit of that flood storage that we currently have. Once that flood storage is exhausted, then that would be the question of do we, again, do we maintain current releases and start using the access district storage?
Yeah, I was, I was hoping we'd make it through the 1st of August at least. One rain gets us a long, long, long ways if we could just get a decent rain around here, but anyway. I, I, I just want to interject just for a sec. These are, these are kind of requests that came from the irrigators because of what was happening from, we were targeting at Menter and Menter would, at that target level, we weren't able to maintain pumping at that level. So we asked that those target levels be raised just a little bit, just during the irrigating system or season. And so, and it's, it's worked wonderful this year. I've been in contact with Richard two or three times a week, monitoring that level, and he's done, he's done a great job of getting us some releases when we need them. So, but that's, that was the main emphasis of, of the change.
Okay, any, any other questions or comments on the agreement? Okay, I will bring it back for action. Thank you, Mr. Rockle, for your information and participation.
I move for the approval of operations agreement with the Kansas Division of Water Resources.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the operations agreement for the Kansas Division of Water Resources. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, it is past 3:30. Do we want to back up on the agenda and have our public hearing? Okay. We're going to go back up to item two, public hearings. I will open the public hearing.
Deputy PAC Director of Finance, this public hearing is for the 2025 budget of the Lower Smoky Hill Water Supply Access District. The current budget allocation or, or proposed budget is for $221,834 in revenues and $221,834 in expenditures. And I would stand for any questions or if the public has any questions for us.
Questions for Ms. PAC?
Where, where am I sitting?
No questions? Okay. Any public comment? Okay, I will close the public hearing. And I will entertain a motion to approve item 2.1A, approval of the 2025 budget.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval of the 2025 budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Yeah, we will move down to new business, item 4.1. Yeah, we did 4.1. 4.2, election of officers.
4.2, the election of officers is election of the President, Vice President, Secretary and Treasurer. And I did make note on here that all Commissioners are eligible because they're all, will, will be in, on duty or on staff through 2025, so. Current, the current slate is that Commissioner Longby, or Bill Longby is President, Tom Toll is Vice President, Carl Esping is Secretary, and Greg Lenkowitz is Treasurer at this time. So we'll stand for any nominations and you can open those up.
Well, since Commissioner Hoppeck is not here... That's what you get for taking off.
Ah, do I hear any nominations for President?
If we could do the whole slate, I'd...
That's what I would agree with.
Full slate at once?
Just re, renominate the current slate. Renominate the current officers.
Renominate the current officers. I'm fine with that.
Mike gets out of it.
I'll second the nominations.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to renominate the current slate of officers for the next year, 2025. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item 4.3, discussion of the next meeting date. We meet quarterly, is that correct?
We gave you a lot of options here because of some, maybe doing farm work at that time.
Is today just to get the nominations or do we actually have to vote? We presented a slate, but we didn't vote on it. Or do we have to vote if it's the same? We approved the slate, but we haven't... Or is, or is that to be done at the next meeting? That was my question.
So I think the intent and the understanding is that we, that you just voted on that nominated slate of officers, but need to confirm that. If there was any confusion in that regard, we need to go back and clear that up.
That would have been my end goal. I just didn't know whether we had actually officially publicly voted yet. This is what we...
We took a vote, didn't we?
We took a vote on, for that to be the slate upon which we would vote, but I didn't know that that constituted a vote.
I think the wording was approving the slate of officers. I think implied in that was approving them as, as the elected officers. If there's consensus, I think we can reflect that in the minutes.
City Attorney, I'm, I'm good with as long as it's legal. Or binding, I should say.
Commissioner Davis, you're an officer, would you like to be an officer?
Why do you think I've been so much been eager to, to approve the current slate?
Yeah, as I read this, election of officers that will be effective, I guess the question is when is that effective? Next meeting?
Next meeting.
Yes. So now we are in discussion of the next meeting date and this will be for the fourth quarter?
Yes.
And we have options of four different date ranges. This is the third quarter meeting, correct?
Yes.
Fourth quarter.
We're okay with whatever date.
September 23rd? Because that would still be...
It couldn't be in September to be counted as a fourth quarter, would it? Is it a calendar year?
Fourth quarter begins October.
October 1st?
Yeah.
You got Jemera stepping. I know.
It is a statutory requirement that you meet quarterly and I would assume that would mean...
Calendar quarters.
Calendar quarters.
Yeah, so ignore the September dates because that would still be the third quarter.
Right. So the October dates, any preference?
The 14th?
From the district? That's soybean cut in time.
14th probably, I don't know, doesn't matter. It's too far away to know what...
Weather dictates that.
Yeah.
Okay, and these dates do coincide with our commission meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we have our next meeting on October 14th.
Do we make that a motion? Or do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Just need an agreement? October 14th, is everyone in agreement of that?
October 14th?
Yes. Okay. We will meet again here on October 14th, time to be determined. Any unfinished or other business? On the way down here, I heard there was a shower up by Concordia, so...
Now there's one west of us out here.
You can see the blue colors, see which way it's moving. It didn't work.
Yes, we hope. Nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.
Good afternoon. I will call to order the July 22, 2024, meeting of the Salina City Commission to Order. I will ask staff if confirmation to Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Mayor Longby.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Commissioner Ivey.
Here.
And Commissioner Langwitz.
Here.
May all who are willing and able please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, public hearings.
Item 3.1, conduct a public hearing on and consider approval of Resolution Number 24-8228 declaring 1616 West Crawford Street to be a dangerous structure, ordering it repaired or removed, and establishing a reasonable timeframe in which to do so.
Okay, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Furbek.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Mr. Mayor. I'm Sean Furbek, the Dangerous Structure Specialist with the Community and Development Service Department. Today, we're here to talk about the dangerous structure at 1616 West Crawford. Can you tip the mic towards you a little bit there while you're waiting? You're...I think you need to point it up a little. That's a fish. Okay, we can go to the next slide. I'm here to present the building official's request for condemnation of the structure at 1616 West Crawford. At the end of this presentation, I will ask you to find my resolution that this structure is dangerous by Salina Municipal Code definition. Direct the repair or removal of the structure and fix a reasonable time within which one of these must be commenced and diligently prosecuted. KSA 121750 and following provide the roadmap for our process. In keeping with the statute, the City Commission met on June 3, 2024, and passed Resolution 248213, setting the date for this public hearing. Notice of the hearing was published twice, at least 30 days prior to the public hearing. The dates of publish were June 4 and 11 of 2024. Next slide, please. Per statute, copies of the resolution were mailed to all interested parties June 7 of 2024, and we are conducting the required public hearing as we speak. In a moment, you will hear evidence for the dangerous structure designation for the former Ambassador Hotel. Next slide, please. At the conclusion of this hearing, we will ask you to determine as to whether the structure at 1616 West Crawford is dangerous. If the Commission supports the dangerous designation of the building official, we will ask that you direct the repair or removal of the structure and fix a reasonable time within which one of these must be commenced and diligently prosecuted. Of course, the resolution will be published and mailed to the owners and parties of interest. Next slide, please. In the event the structure is ultimately demolished by the city, state law provides a process. The cost of the demolition will be billed to the property owner, and if payment is not made, a special assessment is filed against the land on which the structure is located for reimbursement. Next slide, please. To ensure procedural fairness, the evidence supporting our request was not provided to you until now. Next slide, please. This slide contains detailed information for the property, and most of it may be found in your packet. Next slide, please. As you can see on the table, required certified mailings to provide notice of this hearing took place on June 7, 2024. Andre Investments' certified letter returned unclaimed, so we used a process server to attempt service at the home address. The process server contacted the subject on the Ring doorbell and was told to leave the documents at their front door. Additionally, a copy of the resolution was emailed to the owner on July 11, 2024. Parties of interest were Great Plains National Bank, and their letter returned unclaimed, so we sent that UPS overnight delivery to the business. Herring Bank, the certified was signed for by front desk personnel, and Celine County Clerk was signed for by county staff. In addition to the required mailings, notice of the hearing was posted on the property on June 5, 2024. To provide context for the code violation that makes the structure at 1616 West Crawford dangerous, eight violations have been abated for unsecured structure reasons since 2021. In the past year, when the city contractor boarded to secure the structure within 24 hours, the boarding to the building was removed and the building was open again. Salina Fire Department responded to a structured fire at the Ambassador before midnight on March 12. Inspections were conducted on March 13, and they revealed evidence of several criminal activities. To our knowledge, no repairs have been made to the structure, and the city has performed all mowing of grass and weeds and all trash removal from the property in 2024. Here you see a summary of violations on the property in the past 21 months. Not included on that list is a recent search warrant which was executed for tall grass and weeds, trash, and, again, unsecured structure. The warrant was completed on Friday, July 19, and by Saturday, July 20, the structure was open again. Salina Municipal Code criteria for determining the dangerous status of a structure is found in Section 31502.1. There are 11 violation criteria, and any one of those criteria warrants a dangerous structure designation. This structure meets 10 of the 11 listed criteria. So what makes a structure dangerous? Let's begin with Criterion One. Having any obstructed path of egress makes a structure dangerous. This picture demonstrates a significant blockage of any egress for this portion of the building, and this condition is found in several of the hallways in the structure. Criterion Two. Having any dangerous walking surface that does not provide safe and adequate means of egress makes a structure dangerous. Note in this picture the stripped wire insulation that creates tripped hazards, sharp objects scattered in the path of egress, and items that have fallen from above. Criterion Three. Any portion of a structure that has been damaged such that elements become detached or dislodged, or any portion of the structure that is likely to experience partial collapse makes a structure dangerous. Since the fire on March 12, 2024, incomplete wall assemblies have been left to bear the weight of the floor and ceiling assemblies above. Criterion Five. When a building becomes dilapidated such that it is likely to partially collapse, it is a dangerous structure. Note in this picture the holes in the roof in the atrium area that have omitted the elements for years. When left unrepaired, such holes will lead to the building collapse. In this picture, elements of the ceiling assembly have already fallen to the floor Criterion Six. Any structure allowed to exist in a condition that makes it dangerous for use and occupancy is a dangerous structure. This picture shows a former sleeping room in the hotel. This is still on six. This picture shows a view of the third story of the hotel, where a 25 to 30-foot section of the wall is missing. This allows direct access to and from the roof area. Structural and nonstructural elements have been removed or failed, emitting the elements over time. Criterion Seven. When a building is abandoned and becomes a harbor for vagrants or criminals, it is a dangerous structure. Note in the picture above that the trespassing vagrant occupier of this room kept both a fuel-fired heater and the fuel for it in their room. This is a picture of one room in the hotel. There are many more like it, with varying hazards in each. Criterion Eight. When a building presents a substantial risk of fire or an imminent threat to life and safety, a structure is dangerous. The coloring on the walls of this hotel room is mold and mildew that are on the walls, the floor, and in the ceiling assemblies. There are many rooms in the hotel in this condition, due to the holes in the roof that have been emitting rain for years. When we conducted the search of the hotel to determine the extent of the code violation after the fire on March 12, city staff wore respirators to protect their life from these safety hazards. Criterion Nine. Any building used for dwelling purposes must have appropriate construction and building systems in support of occupancy. Inadequate building systems, such as lighting, ventilation, mechanical, or plumbing systems, make a structure dangerous. In this picture, you can see cut water lines and open building drain vent lines. On the next slide, you will see that all of the hotel's building systems are inadequate or nearly completely missing at this time. Any building that lacks fire-resistant rated construction or systems needed for occupancy is a dangerous structure. In the upper-left picture, you can see the mechanical system components have been removed. So equipment needed for ventilation and climate controls are missing. In the two pictures on the right, you see that electrical wiring has been removed from the hotel. The upper picture shows remnants of an electrical panel, and the lower picture shows the conduit through the wiring...you know, through which wiring once ran as it came up through the floor. The picture on the lower left shows electrical wiring insulation that has been removed and left in the hotel's swimming pool, presumably so that the copper could be scrapped. Any structure that...or Criterion 11, any structure that has been abandoned and becomes an attractive nuisance is a dangerous structure. This picture is another living area in the former guest room where vagrants have taken up residency. Numerous rooms in the hotel are in a similar condition, showing evidence of vagrant occupation and criminal activity. Without adequate security, an abandoned hotel is an attractive place for vagrants to seek Here's a summary of the facts regarding the dangerous condition in the former Ambassador Hotel. The building is abandoned and unsafe for occupancy for nearly every dangerous structure reason articulated in Salina Municipal Code. For years, the owner has not kept the building secure, which has allowed extensive occupation by vagrants and provide opportunity for documented criminal activity. A post-fire inspection on 5/9/24 showed more than 25 separate locations where fires had been set inside the structure. Several syringes and needles were found among the rubbish left by the vagrants in abandoned The unsecured status of the structure precipitated a marked decline in the condition of the structure and the property in the last two years. A few years ago, the city saw developers looking at this structure for possible repair and development. A tour of the structure led them to abandon the idea. Since then, the structure and property conditions have deteriorated significantly, as evidenced by the preceding slides. The structure has numerous holes in the roof over the atrium, missing wall sections on the third floor. These have omitted the elements for years. If repairs were to be considered, the structural elements in these portions of the building would require evaluation by engineers to determine what repairs would be needed and what would be required to complete them. The structure has significant water damage and related mold and mildew in guest rooms and in the walls. Significant remediation work is needed before workers would be safe to work without PPE for respiratory reasons. Required building systems are nonoperational and misty. Most electrical lines have been removed. Most of the water supply lines have been removed. Many of the plumbing fixtures and lines have been removed. Much of the mechanical and ventilation equipment has been removed, and sprinkler and fire alarm systems are not intact. The property has a well-documented history of vagrants. Salina PD has responded to this address nine times for trespassers. Over time, this problem is getting worse, not better. To conclude, the building official has determined that the structure at 1616 West Crawford is unsafe and dangerous. Based upon the preponderance of evidence presented this afternoon, we request the City Commission find by resolution that this structure is dangerous and direct the repair or removal of the structure, and fix a reasonable time within which one of these must be commenced and diligently prosecuted. If you look in your packet for Resolution 248220, you'll find our recommendation for reasonable times for which the owner should execute the required process steps. These include: For repair. Permit application to be submitted no later than September 20, 2024. Permit to be secured on or before October 21, 2024. Repair work to commence no later than November 19, 2024, and be diligently prosecuted until For demolition. Permit application must be submitted no later than August 21, 2024. Permit to be secured no later than August 30, 2024. And the demolition work to commence no later than September 5, 2024, and be diligently prosecuted until complete. Do you have any questions of me or us?
Questions for Mr. Furbek.
No, I think this lays it out quite clearly, and a little worse than I thought it was. I don't have any questions. It has nothing to do with this, per se, but we're assuming that the usable materials inside were removed to be sold. Didn't have any police activity regarding who was taking the stuff out the building?
That is correct.
Well, I think what you presented is a pretty clear picture of what we're dealing with, and I thank you for your investigation and work on this. Is there a representative of the owner of this property here who would like to comment? Please state your name.
I'm Joshua Joseph with Andrew Lodging LLC. I'm owner of the property. In 20...if I may start. In 2018 or 2019, I had brought architects into Salina, knowing that the building is old and the building cannot continue as a hotel. So I came up here and brought to the planning session, I brought a complete plan, architectural plan, with my architects here, to change the property's zoning to a strip center in the front and a storage building in the back, converting. Before, they listened to all our requests to change, and the next thing we come to know is, after a few months, there was a zoning request change because they didn't want us to make it, even before they replied to us. You know, you all have come and made a zoning request change, and changed the zoning where I cannot do a strip center and a storage facility in the back, behind in the building. And then I was approached by the city officials with a buyer, and I agreed to sell the property to them. And for many months, or almost a year or two, they kept going with the process of buying the property to turn it to apartments, and they brought in the $25 million grant that you all have received. But in the meantime, we were...because the building would take, you know, a significant amount to demolish it, where I was not aware that the $25 million grant was granted to somebody who did not have to use the hotel premises. In the last six months or eight months, when, you know, when I was...when it was sure that the building was not going to...like the... was sure that the building was not going to, like, the apartment project was given to somebody else, I approached the city, and I said, hey, I'm ready to demolish the project and, and secure it if at least the city can allow to take all the, all the materials to the dumpyard without charging us, because, you know, it's been a property, it's been there, and you all have been giving a lot and to redevelop the property. And I was told by the city officials and the managers that they will not approve any, any of those things. The only way is, no new adjustments to the building can be made. The only way to, for me to get anything passed by the city council is I demolish everything or, or nothing. And, and the maximum, I guess, they would take only a limited amount of, of material that is there. I have codes from companies who are ready to demolish. I have Dave Beverly, the city, the, in Salina, the construction engineers who are working on, you know, on the stability of the building. The building has, you know, huge, huge I-beams, and, you know, it's not structurally damageable, but I was, I'm willing to, I was willing to demolish all the hotel rooms and build a new one and redo everything, but I've been given a lot of pushback by the city. And so, I'm still here willing, if I'm given the opportunity, to demolish most of the building, keep some, and rebuild as long as the city works with me, and, and, you know, since, since, since many months, I've been, since 2019, I've been given the run-around that, you know, something is going to happen, the apartment projects are going to take over. And, in fact, I myself, you know, with our architect team, we send in a 500-room apartment with demolishing that building and the next, the restaurant next door and connecting it, and obviously, and none of that was even given a, even a, given a chance to look at. So, I'm ready to demolish the whole building. I would just ask the city council, if you may approve us at least to be able to take our trash, then I have, I have people, contractors, ready to demolish the building and, and completely fence it and safeguard it and come up with some new plans. That's my request.
Thank you. We are beyond any development, and those prospects went a different direction, and so, yeah, we're here today to declare this a dangerous structure and appreciate your cooperation and... Is there any other comments from interested parties? Any public comment? I will close the public hearing, bring this back for action.
Mayor, one, one item that we probably need to clarify is, there is a few amendments made, there's a redline version on your, your desk, and I think staff's prepared to walk you through those changes that, from the document-
Do you need to keep the hearing open, then?
Um, yeah, just in case someone wants to comment on those changes. I don't think they're substantive, but we should walk you through those.
Okay, we will strike the closing and reopen the public hearing.
There was a minor change to recital B, section 1, which I, from memory, I believe it was the word four-
Yeah, insertion of the word "for," so it reads, "which provide the basis for determining that any structure or premises shall be considered dangerous."
The other one is the assertion of additional proposed finding number 4 based upon the Code 315025, and that is one of the slides that we covered. Which is the building or structure, or part of a building or structure, because of dilapidation, deterioration, decay, faulty construction, the removal of mov-, the removal or movement of some portions of the ground necessary for support or any other reason, it is likely to partially or completely collapse, for some portion of the foundation or underpinning of the building or structure is likely to fall or give way. Then there was a, we found that there was a duplication of one of the findings, and that was under 31502.110, and that was removed, and so now there's just in order minus number 4, is the one from the code section that was not used.
Yeah, so I think the duplication was, section 7 and 9 were worded identically, so section 7 was deleted. And then, if we back up to page 2, section 1, the third line was reworded to read, "All interested parties were mailed a copy of the resolution by certified mail and as necessary, provided a copy by further means." Just kind of move some of the wording around to flow better, so. As a quick recap, in the whereas section B, insertion of the word "for," in the resolved section, section 1, rewording as I just read to you, in section 4, insertion of a new "for" that reads "parts of the structure because of dilapidation, deterioration, unrepaired fire damages, unrepaired holes to the roof assembly, and because of unrepaired or removed walls, sections on the third floor are likely to partially collapse," and deletion of the section that was previously numbered 7 because it is identical to the section 9. And those are the, the changes reflected in the redline copy that was just distributed since the packet went out.
Thank you. Is any other staff comments or remarks?
Mayor, if I may-
Yes, sir.
Quickly, one aspect that I expect might be of interest. Section 5 is an approach intended to address either of the options, as you can see, there's a series of dates with the actual completion of the work to be diligently prosecuted. In order to be sure that the building official can monitor that, and that that can be, if there's a problem with the diligent prosecution of the work, the means by which this can be brought back to you is a determination by the building official that there is a lack of diligent prosecution, and in consultation with the city manager, a show cause hearing can then be placed on your agenda so that the matter can come before you as expeditiously as possible, with notice to all of the interested parties of that hearing. But in the event there is a problem with the diligent prosecution, it positions both staff and the governing body in a, in a position to address that, that concern in a manner that gets it before you as the governing body.
Thank you. Anything else? I will close the public hearing, bring this back for action.
Just have a question for staff. In listening to Mr. Joseph's final plan for the property, you know, removing a dangerous structure is certainly different from any redevelopment of the property, you know, so the goal of this is just to remove a dangerous structure. If we were to consider negotiating some absorption of the landfill fees, is that something that is negotiated afterwards and separate from this action? And I'd just bring that as an example, but if there were any other negotiations or-
Right. And so, Commissioner, as I'm sure you're aware, we get similar requests on a number of different topics. As it relates to dangerous structures, this isn't the only request we've received this year in response to our dangerous structure efforts. And then other operations, whether it's water, Tony's Pizza Event Center, we've received similar requests. So, what I've been gunned doing with those that are requesting, as well as you as the governing body, is approaching it as, these are enterprise funds that are expected to charge fees and cover their cost, and if we want to do something like this, we really just need to characterize it as a request for funding. Whether you want to call that economic development, whether you want to call that financial assistance, in the case of the landfill, we are making more assertive efforts at, at dangerous structure code enforcement, and what staff has pointed out to me is the volume of some of these demolitions are actually going to accelerate the timing in which we need to build new landfill cells, which is the basis on which we set our fees in the first place. So, if the governing body was so inclined, my recommendation would be that it not just be a tipping fee waiver, it be a reallocation of funds from, I guess, the general fund to the landfill fund, if you're so inclined. The conversations, when Mr. Joseph made the request, we took that up and had an opportunity to consider it. There was no indication at that time that, that there was support for that, and so that's the basis of the, the feedback that I've previously given him. If you want to reconsider that, I suppose now would be the time to do that, just because as you take this action, if you take this action with no additional action as relates to fees, what that's telling staff is you've elected not to, to cover the tipping fee, and you've instructed staff and the owner to proceed with repair or demolition with, with no provision for that.
Well, it's, it's a slippery slope because there, I can think of one other building in town larger than this one that, you know, if that owner were to see us take that action, I'd think them not being very observant to not at least ask for the same, for the same consideration. And, you know, it's one thing to demolish the building, it's like going to the store and buying stuff, you got to do something with the trash. So, it's got to go somewhere, and that should be part of the demolition cost. You just can't knock the building down, you got to do something with what you knocked down. But I didn't know how far those conversations had, had gone, but it, it does not specifically, it would not influence my decision about whether this is a dangerous structure or not, and I hadn't thought of it any further up to this moment, the thought just crossed my mind.
And we've, we've also struggled to quantify the value of that, that tipping fee, not knowing, number one, there are alternative means with the concrete, if it's crushed, we've, we've made Mr. Joseph aware of, well, we would accept it no fee if it were crushed to the right dimensions and didn't have rebar, don't know what is salvageable, so we really don't know how much would be brought to the, the landfill and what the tipping fee associated with that might be. The other thing that you may be aware is, it currently, we are, or have worked 18 dangerous structures this year, about half of those have voluntarily complied, the other half are in various stages of this process, but multiples of them have asked, made the same request for a waiver of tipping fees.
And I think that tipping fee is beyond the scope of this hearing, that if we're going to grant tipping fee waivers for this demolition, then you better be prepared to waive them for everything. Any other comments?
Just, just one other thing, you know, it's, I was going to ask Mr. Joseph, but is there any reason for our difficulty reaching, Mr. Joseph, that we can avoid with future?
Yeah, we, I've spoken with Mr. Joseph on occasion by cell phone, intermittent, how effective it is to call him or receive a return phone call, but we email, we've emailed in the past, we've talked on, on the phone, there are opportunities, there are lines of communication.
Okay, just noticed the mailings that were-
Yeah, Commissioner, I might mention that the entity is a Kansas limited liability company. As a result, they designate the address on filings with the Kansas Secretary of State, and that is the basis for the address that was used and refused.
I'll bring this back for action.
Just looking, looking for the wording.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution Number 24-8220, finding that the structure at 1616 West Crawford Street is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure. If the owner elects to make the premises safe and secure by performing the demolition work, the order, owner is ordered and directed to comply with the following. I don't, don't you read all this?
No.
No.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution Number 24-8220, finding that the structure at 1616 West Crawford Street is unsafe and dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure. The owner elects to make this premises safe and secure by performing duties, the demolition work, the owner is ordered and directed to comply with the following. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 5-0.
4-0. Hmm, 4?
No, 4. Well, Commissioner Hoppick is here in, so he's a marketer.
Mayor, if I may-
Yes.
Sorry, I was slow to switch from the resolution to the blue sheet. I suppose it would be best if that motion included reference to comply with the following actions as outlined in the staff report and, and the resolution.
To read all the following actions?
No, not to read it, but just to make reference to the fact that that is set forth in the resolution.
Okay. Would you like to amend your motion?
I'd amend my motion to include the four items outlined in the staff's report.
And actually, I'm sorry, Mayor, it would be best to refer to the actions outlined either in section 3 or- either in section three or section four of the resolution.
So I think where that leaves you is approving the resolution as you stated it, and then noting that if the owner elects to make the premises safe and secure by performing the demolition work, the order is, or repair, the owner is ordered and directed to comply with the recommendations found in sections three and four of resolution 248220.
The requirements.
The requirements.
Yeah, rather than recommendations.
Uh...
In the resolution.
Can we start over?
I apologize, but yeah, I think that's going to be necessary.
Okay. So I would move that we approve resolution number 24-8220, finding that the structure at 1616 West Crawford Street is unsafe or dangerous, directing that the structure be repaired or removed and the premises made safe and secure. If the owner elects to make the premises safe and secure by performing the demolition work, the owner is ordered and directed to comply with the following, the requirements being laid out in section three and four of resolution 248220.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the amended motion. All in favor say aye. 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 Motion carries four zero. Item 3.2.
Item 3.2, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of resolution number 24-8224, a resolution of advisability to issue industrial revenue bonds to Superior Contracting Manufacturing Services Co.
I will open the public hearing. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Glad to be here again for another industrial revenue bond project. We're going to go back in time a little bit to October 20th, 2023, an option agreement between the Slana Airport Authority and Superior Contracting and Manufacturing Company, we'll call Superior following after that. They signed a three-year option on the property. It's a 9.33 acre lot that's located on the corner of Clay Ridge Court and Scanlon Avenue. After that meeting, that option signing followed quite a long discussion between the airport and the company, talking about their plans for the building and buildings. And the company came, their CFO talked with me after that, and we took several months, the company took several months getting information on the building, quotes on the building, layouts, getting ready to make a final decision. And the building, the first building is a hundred, a little over 100,000 square feet, and then the second building with an additional 40,000 square feet. And the company is asking, asked at that time, they would like to have 100% abatement on the real property taxes and also on the construction materials. And we went through the process, met with the company, the board of directors did on June 20th. And at that time, Trevor Franzen, who's the chief development officer, made the presentation to the SEEDO board of directors, and he's going to come up and kind of tell you what he told us at that point about the plans on the building, the why. Shelley Swanson with the Airport Authority is also here. We have a need in the building, in the community, for buildings, quality industrial space. We've got older buildings that have low ceilings, or they're too small, or they have other issues, but really don't have a quality building that we can show to companies that are coming here, or local companies that need to expand and need additional space. So this has been something that's been talked about for quite a while, and Superior felt like they could come forward. They had been contacted by some individuals about the need for space. And I'm going to have Trevor come up next, and he can talk about this in more detail. Trevor?
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for considering our request.
State your name, state your name, please.
My name's Trevor Franzen with Superior Contract Manufacturing Services. I believe we have some slides we can show. This may seem a little bit like deja vu. We have talked about a previous project like this once before, and the commission did approve that. That was for a much larger building, so to give a little bit of history about how we were back here, we were working with a developer and working on support. It was a very large project for us. And after several months of not a lot of traction with that large project, it realized it was more than we were willing to risk. We had hoped to be able to lease it out to local companies, but it was a large space. You can see here, on the slide, the proposed previous project, that was 1750, that was the large warehouse up to 240,000 square feet, larger than what we could do on our own. And so we'd worked with a developer to help there, and that did not work out. And so we worked with the Airport Authority about this property. To the west there, you can see the west warehouse location. I believe we have next slide here, if we can. And this project, we, rather than working with a out-of-town developer, we went to local architects here and said, hey, what can we do with this space? And they come up with a really good solution, a little bit closer picture there of the 9.3 acres we're talking about. And came up with two buildings that we could do in a phase approach, so we could, again, something we could handle as a company at risk. The first building was 100,000 square feet, do it in six smaller units, so that it could appeal to more local tenants. When we were in the process of trying to do the large 240,000 square foot building, we were at 50,000 square foot each unit. And after that point, when we were trying to find tenants, we had a lot of requests in the 15, 20, 25,000 square feet. They didn't need the large space. But with such a large building, it didn't really work to divide it into those small of units. And so after we worked with the local architect to get a building layout, if we could show the next slide, hopefully it's got a layout here to show. But the companies that we did contact, there we are, this is the proposed building for this space, the development, the L-shaped building, six units in the 15,000 to 20,000 square foot range. This one we will do without having to wait for signed leases. We're going to take all the risk on and move forward. We have had a lot of requests for it, but almost every one of them said, I need the space tomorrow, I can't wait a year. And we realized that if we're going to be able to have this facility, we have to build it and then have it ready for them to move in. And then to help, again, with us taking on the project, we have a second phase, which is a smaller 40,000 square foot building. The hope is we lease out all six units, and we're ready to put up the other one, the other building, and that's either for our own expansion or for more tenants. There's some renderings we have. Again, this is by a local architect who put this together, and again, we want to try to work with local parties as we do not have a good experience not staying in town, so... Is there any questions about the building, the proposed use, industrial warehouse space, light manufacturing, storage, mostly to support local businesses on the industrial park, and hopefully for our own expansion as that goes, so...
Questions? So do you have prospective tenants?
We have, we have been talking with several. We don't have any signed leases yet, but local companies are looking for space, especially in the industrial park. And so our hope is, once the building starts construction, we can get a little bit more firm commitment.
And some of the space will be allocated for Superior's use?
Some will, either in this building or the second phase, the 40,000 square foot. We, as you know, with the Eldorado facility that we purchased several years ago, we're pretty well full. We've got one building leased out on a long-term lease to Kansas Erosion. And then with our current facility, we filled it up completely. Got a lot of new opportunities and growth there. And so we're needing somewhere else to either storage or equipment. And so the hope is that as we grow, this building can also provide some additional space to move into.
And how many companies or divisions are under the Superior roof now?
So right now, there are eight total. So we've got quite a diverse, and it's been pretty exciting to watch. You know, I've been working with them for six years, I joined their team about two years ago. And even in those two years, you know, we've added a new automation controls division, industrial automation and controls, and so that group is expanding. But the other divisions that we have, we've got underground division, mechanical, which is through Calabrese Heating and Cooling, electrical, which they're known as Accurate Electric, our plumbing division, of course, and then we also do tool sales through Tool Time. And then Superior Pump and Motor, they do a lot of work for water pumps like at Kenwood Cove or other municipalities, and then our automation and controls. So again, very diverse, and the largest space that we have is actually through South Industrial Sheet Metal and Fabrication. And so we've got lasers there, we do a lot of more job shop metal fabrication and manufacturing there, so custom metalwork.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, I guess question more for Mr. Robinson, or both of you jointly, but when you look at the research done by Wichita State...
Yes, sir.
For the city and the county, these are kind of break-even scenarios, certainly for the 10-year benefit cost ratio, it goes up on the 20. How do you weight that low benefit with the relatively small number of jobs? I'm sorry, I was rating the whole project.
Right.
And we're not losing money on it, but not exactly...
I think there's multiple ways to look at it, but the one, I think, when the SEEDO board looked at this, the item that came up was, well, this is meeting a need for area industry, this building, we need space. And Shelley Swanson, I'm going to have her come up here in a minute after I answer your question, and talk about the need they see from the airport. But I think overall, we put in a minimum number of jobs because we just weren't sure. We just, this is a speculative project to some degree, company's taken the risk, but we think overall, there'll be jobs, quite a few jobs, many more. The company had talked about 14 originally, we went back and forth on that and looked at the numbers and felt like, well, let's be a little more conservative and go with the five. And, but, Doctor, I think they're going to, this project will pay off. It may not be in huge numbers, but it'll provide a need, and we know companies are looking for space.
And we don't have, obviously, we don't have a glut of storage space, or this wouldn't be an issue, but the community does not otherwise have this type of storage?
No, there's not, I mean, this company's taken a pretty good-sized investment, risk to put this up. So, you know, we've been in a fortune over the years, and Shelley, probably this will be a good time for you to come up, you know, we've had space available, and, you know, now that's pretty much full, the airport. I'll let Shelley, I won't steal her thunder, but, you know, we have a need, a definite need.
Ms. Swanson?
Good afternoon. Shelley Swanson, Director of Administration and Finance for the Slana Airport Authority. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for considering this item. So the Airport Authority, we own about and manage 1.2 million square feet of property. Of that 1.2 million square feet, about 350,000 square feet of that is for warehouse or light industrial. Right now, as we told our Airport Authority Board of Directors at the last meeting, our no vacancy sign is up. We do not have any warehouse space or light manufacturing space available. So our development center, which is a seven-unit facility, is full. Last October was the, where we closed on the lease of a 30,000 square foot facility. That was the last true Hawker Beechcraft warehouse space that we had renovated. And we actually had that property, the lease for, it's two units, two 15,000 square foot units. We had both of those leases signed and the tenants ready to move in before construction was complete, and we had our occupancy permit. So I handled the incoming inquiries about available space at the Airport Industrial Center, and for the last several months, we've been able, we've not been able to accommodate any requests for additional space. And it's not, I should say, it's not just for new entries into the market, it's to help our existing businesses that might have ebbs and flows in their inventory, whether they need to ramp up space for a particular season. When we used to be able to help them with, manage that, we're unable to do that. And so since Superior had purchased 1655 Wall Street, we've been referring calls to them. And now Trevor is telling me we're full in that facility, and we need to look at an option to construct new. So the Airport Authority fully supports the warehouse project, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions that the Commissioners might have.
Questions?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the building, the process, the board of directors met on the 20th. We did approve with an 8-0 vote to support the project. We reviewed, during our review process, we looked at our scoring matrix that we developed, I guess, two years ago now, and looked at the full 100% abatement, which we felt was deserved on this project, via the scoring matrix, and we moved ahead. And then that was on the 20th, and then the 26th, the Airport Authority sold the 9.33 acres to the company. So at this point, you'll have gotten the, should have gotten the full report, which I think you did, from Wichita State, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the Commission may have.
I did have one question come to mind. A lot of this space is built on speculation. If it does not fill up, could this space be utilized for some other type of business or operation, other than warehousing?
Well, warehousing or manufacturing, light manufacturing, but that'd be a question for Trevor. I can't say that, give it, put that answer in his mouth.
So the building specifications, it's a, will be a tall building, we're hopeful 32-foot clear height, will have dock doors and drive-in doors, as well as office space in the front with restrooms or locker rooms, depending on what the tenant needs. So it's very much an open space that could be utilized in various, various ways if warehousing or light manufacturing is not there, although there may be some zoning regulations I'm not aware of at this time, so...
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope. Well, as we always have with different issues, we've got several options. Mike, you want me to go ahead and go through those? Okay. Get on the right page here. So we could approve resolution, you all could approve resolution 248224. Choice number one. Number two, approve resolution 248224 with amendments, as City Commission deems appropriate. Third option is postpone the consideration of this resolution to a specified date and time, provide staff direction or... time, provide staff direction regarding additional information or amendments that you would like. Option four, approve the resolution on the first reading and provide direction regarding additional information or amendments the Commission would like to request. Or five, vote to deny Resolution twenty-four eighty-two twenty-four, resulting in the issuance of the industrial revenue bonds. And one option, I, I had it written down here, that Sarah Steele from Gilmore and Bell is here. So, if there's anything she needs to clean up that I said incorrectly, Sarah, you wanna come up and fix, fix those things, or make additional comments about the bond process? Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Mad.
Ms. Steele.
Sarah Steele, Gilmore and Bell. We are Bond Council of the City, and just wanted to remind you, as I know you all know, these are obligation of the company, Superior. They are in no way an obligation of the city, doesn't count as debt towards the, the city, and you're not in any way responsible for making any payments on these types of bonds. Industrial revenue bonds may be issued by a city or a county in the state of Kansas, and there's really two benefits that are primarily used. One is a sales tax exemption on all of the materials being purchased for construction, personal property, if there's racking or anything else that, that is installed in the project when it's constructed, that may all be exempt from sales tax. And that's across the board, including the state's six and a half percent. The second benefit is a property tax exemption that is almost one hundred percent. In 2017, the school district's capital outlay levy, which may go up to, to eight mils by statute, that can no longer be exempted. And if there are any special assessments on this property, those are not exempted either. So, it's almost one hundred percent, but, but not quite. So, be happy to answer any other questions on IRBs in general, or-
Thank you for clarifying that. We need reminders occasionally. Questions for Ms. Steele?
If I could, you might elaborate on the next steps after this action item, just for everyone's benefit, please.
Certainly. So, we'll assist the company in obtaining a certificate for the sales tax exemption. That will be right away, before they start construction. Then they'll go off and construct. We will, we will kind of keep in touch with them on timing, but want to time the actual issuance of the bonds for a, you know, for a, a purpose of granting the property tax exemption. That comes into effect pursuant to state law on a January one of the year following the year in which bonds are issued. So, I assume they will not be very far along in twenty-four. Probably in 2025, we will come back to this Commission and actually approve the issuance of the bonds with an ordinance. So, obviously, two readings, two consecutive meetings. Once that's done, there are a number of documents that will need to be signed, and then we'll just close on that bond issue. Again, it's solely an obligation of the company. So, there's, there's really no responsibility of the city, other than to sign the documents. We'll have a trustee that will act on your behalf, and that's post-closing. So, does that-
Yes, thank you.
Very good?
Commissioners, just real quickly, just, I believe you may be familiar with this before we were on, watching out. IRBs, they are, you know, as far as the bonding, they are essentially just that mechanism that allows a company to get that tax exemption for the construction of materials, and to get up to ten years of property tax exemption. So, just for anybody who's watching out there who isn't certain of that, those are the two benefits you get from IRBs. And that's really what we're looking at in this project, or in other projects. Sometimes it may only be for a sales tax exemption. For this project, it is both a sales tax exemption on the construction materials, as well as a ten-year property tax exemption. And those are the only benefits that you can get through the IRB process. This is a process the state of Kansas created, which allows companies to potentially gain these benefits, to allow cities and counties to be able to track businesses, or to expand their businesses within their locale.
So, do you have a timeline on this project?
Yes, so as soon as, as soon as we're able to, to close, we hopefully can, can begin the design stage, and then in 2025, we can begin construction. We hope construction is twelve to eighteen months, and then ready for occupancy. I, I should, if I make one more comment, as far as the property tax goes, the way commercial leases work, those property taxes actually will be passed on, that, that benefit would be passed on to the potential tenant. And that's not a, a benefit that we would see. Generally, commercial leases involve the tenant paying property taxes on the, on the facility, so the tenant would get that benefit, and not, not, so it would help us stay competitive in the market. Thank you.
Any public comment?
This would be all for concern taxpayers. The Commissioners approved industrial revenue bonds for their first warehouse thing that he says supposedly didn't come to attrition. So, my question is, if those were approved, what happened to the industrial revenue bonds process? Did it just go away? Or is it still out there? Will we have approved those bonds for, for the first project that didn't come to attrition?
Ms. Steele can answer that.
Thank you. Section eight of the resolution before you repeals that resolution that was adopted for the larger building, and so it will no longer be in place. Obviously, we're looking at the two smaller buildings, and if Superior wants to come back in the future with a, another project, that will start the whole process over again. So, we've canceled that action and are ready to move forward on this.
And I would note that was elaborated on in page two of the staff report, under the section headed "Prior IRB Approval and Repeal." And it elaborates further on what Ms. Steele just said.
It specifies the old project. Go ahead. You coming up or not?
Until you change the system, nothing's gonna change. You're gonna have to go back to the system that was here over five hundred years ago. Because as the population increases, so do our problems increase. You start waiving tax abatements, that's what's causing these problems. You can't give this stuff away for free forever. You need to read the article in Time Magazine in October twenty-three, page twenty-six.
Any other public comment? I will close the public hearing and bring this back for action.
Mayor, move approval of Resolution number twenty-four dash eight-two-two-four.
I have a motion as second to approve Resolution number two-four dash eight-two-two-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four-zero. And we have finally made it to the consent agenda.
Item four-point-one, approve the minutes of the meeting of July eighth, 2024. Item four-point-two, approve Resolution number two-four dash eight-two-two-two, appointing members to the Saline County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Item four-point-three, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Davis Concrete Construction of Salina, Kansas, for 2024 minor concrete pavement repair. Item four-point-four, authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Vogts Park Construction LLC of Newton, Kansas, for 2024 major concrete repair. And item four-point-five, approve Resolution number two-four dash eight-two-two-five, which accepts the conditional 2024 Emergency Solutions Grant Award, authorizes the mayor to execute a grant agreement with Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, and authorizes the city manager to direct administrative actions necessary to implement the terms of the agreement.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Is there any item a Commissioner would like to remove? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as, as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four-zero. Administration, item five-point-one.
Item five-point-one, authorize publication of the notice of budget hearing for the 2025 budget, which sets August twelfth, 2024, as the date for public hearing on the twenty-twenty bud, 2025 budget, and establishes the maximum limits of the 2025 budget.
Ms. Peck.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance and Administration. Staff has held five study sessions in the preparation for this point of the budget process. However, state statute requires that we have a formal public hearing of the proposed budget to allow citizens' comments on that budget, and we're required to publish that notice of hearing ten days prior to the hearing date. The, the notice of hearing will include the date, the time, the location, but it also sets our maximum rates, as far as our ad valorem mill levy rate, and our rates of expenditures that we're applying for in our 2025 budget. During the twenty, the June twenty-fourth study session, the City Commission directed staff to use the revenue-neutral rate for the 2025 budget. As such, the proposed budget establishes the maximum mill rate of twenty-nine point four-four-five mils, and this allocates the amounts of, and this is a change to your blue sheet, the amounts didn't tie out with the form, so the new amounts are for the general fund, eleven million, five forty-nine, two ninety-seven, and for the bond and interest fund, three million, eight forty-nine, and three dollars. This publication also includes all of the budgeted funds for the city. I've listed just a few of those major funds here in this, in the staff report, including the general fund at twenty-five, 2025 budget expenditures of sixty million, six hundred and seventeen thousand, one eighty-six, and all of our enterprise funds that the city has today. Also, the bond and interest fund of a 2025 budget expenditures of seven million, nine hundred and sixty thousand. The next steps in the process are that we must notify the city, the county, that we do not intend to exceed our revenue-neutral rate by July twentieth. On August twelfth, we will, we will hold the public hearing after it's been published. We'll pass an ordinance to adopt the budget. We'll also adopt a position classifications and pay plans, the comprehensive fee schedule, and we'll adopt the business improvement district fees. And prior to August twenty-fifth, we're, we're required to be, to submit our adopted certification to the county. After the publication is sent to the papers and is published, we can no longer increase the numbers. We can decrease them if, for some reason, by August twelfth, we see some reason to do so, but we cannot increase them over the twenty-nine point four-four-five mil rate, or the fifteen million dollar property tax, as I mentioned earlier. So, the action today is just for you to authorize staff to, to make the publication and the notice of public hearing for the budget, and set August twelfth as the public hearing date for the 2025 budget. I would stand for questions.
Questions for Ms. Peck? Any public comment? Bring this back for action and make it, everyone understand that we are not exceeding revenue-neutral, and the city's property tax collection will not increase a dime more than it did last year.
With that in mind, Mr. Mayor, I move for authorization of publication of the notice of public budget hearing for the 2025 budget, which sets August twelfth of 2024 as the date of public hearing, and establishes the maximum property tax revenue at fifteen million, five hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-four, an estimated mill levy of twenty-nine point four-four-five, with the final mill levy rate being determined by the county clerk upon final certification.
Second with one, I think that total amount should be fifteen million, three hundred ninety-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, if my math is correct.
That's correct. Three, fifteen million, three ninety-eight, three hundred is the total. Sorry, I should have corrected that as well.
My mistake, I read it from the-
Yeah, the blue sheet was incorrect.
So amend that to fifteen million-
Three ninety-eight, three hundred.
Three ninety-eight, three hundred.
Correct, thank you.
Second that, yep.
Okay, we have a motion as second to authorize publication of the notice of the budget public hearing for the 2025 budget, which sets August twelfth, 2024, as the date of the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four-zero. We'll bring us to developmental business. Item six-point-one.
Item six-point-one, approve ordinance number two-four dash one-one-two-one-two, approving Feast on the Fay as a special event, and authorizing alcoholic, alcohol consumption within the boundaries of barricaded public areas at such event.
Mr. Andrew.
I've got a number of consecutive events, so I'm just gonna set up right here. This item that's before you is a ordinance that would approve Feast on the Fay as a special event, authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the bound, boundaries of a barricaded public area. And back in 2010, the Kansas Legislature amended the State Liquor Control Act to allow for alcohol consumption to occur on public streets and sidewalks, but that consumption is subject to local governing body approval, which is why we're here this afternoon. The ABC, Kansas ABC, set up a process for issuing temporary permits for what it described as special events, provided those events had been approved by the local governing body by ordinance. The legislation was then amended again, and instead of calling them special events, they're referred to as a temporary permit for a street, road, or sidewalk event. And so, the organizers of Feast and the Fay have applied for such a state permit, and they've got to show that the streets and sidewalks that will be closed, if the event's approved, on a map, they have to specify the geographic area, who will be providing alcohol, the hours of the event, and how they plan to address safety and security. And so, we're still operating under guidance that was adopted by the City Commission in 2012, for how they wanted to handle these events. And the local Food Works Foundation has submitted a special event application. They've also submitted an application for alcoholic beverage special event retailers' permit and amplified sound. Only this special event retailers' permit requires your review and approval. So, Feast on the Fay first occurred in 2016. It's been held, for the most part, every year since then. The one thing they haven't done is always locate in the same block on Santa Fe. And so, this year, they are locating in the two-hundred block south of South Santa Fe, which is the block where Yaya's and Old Chicago is located. And their plan would be to close the street and begin setup at three P.M. Their event would be held from five-thirty to eight-thirty in Santa Fe, and then they would have event tear-down after that. The policy that you adopted in 2012 requires that these applications be referred to SDI for, and a recommendation, and any suggested amendments or conditions. And SDI did not receive any comments opposed to either the date or the proposed location of Feast on the Fay. And so, they're requesting that you approve an ordinance that would identify Feast on the Fay as a qualifying special event, and authorize the sale, possession, and consumption of alcoholic liquor within the boundaries of the barricaded public area on the two-hundred block of South Santa Fe. So, we've attached a map to your report that shows where food and alcohol will be served. And your options this afternoon would be to approve the attached ordinance that would approve Feast on the Fay as a special event and- approve Feast on the Fay as a special event and authorize the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area. You could approve it, subject to any modifications to the location, size, date, or time of the event. You could postpone consideration today to a future meeting date if you feel like additional information needs to be provided by the applicants or staff, or you could decline to approve the attached ordinance and deny approval of this special event. I did want to note that they've, they've done it both ways. In some cases in the past, they've had a rain date, that they have an alternate date. It would be held in case of rain. This year, they've indicated if there is rain on September 14th, that they will move the vent inside the Masonic Temple. So there would be no rain date, and there's not a rain date in the ordinance. So with that, I'd be open to any questions that commissioners might have about Feast on the Fay.
Questions? Thank you. Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor move approval of ordinance number 24-11212 approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on South Santa Fe Avenue during the event.
I'll second that. I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 24-11212 approving the Feast on the Fay as a special event and authorizing the consumption of alcoholic liquor within the barricaded area proposed on the South Santa Fe Avenue during the event. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye.
Motion carries by four zero. Item 6.2.
Item 6.2 has to do with the Salina Airport Authority Project 80 and consists of two different items. Item 6.2A is to approve ordinance number 24-11213 annexing an 80.42 acre tract of land on the south side of Waterwell Road, west of Centennial Road. And item 6.2B is to approve ordinance number 24-11214 changing the zoning district classification of a 77.26 acre tract of land on the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road from Celine County Agricultural to I-3.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you. I would just preface my reports by indicating that the official proposed name of this subdivision is Airport Industrial Center Number 3, but when I use that term, nobody knows what I'm talking about, so I'll just call it Project 80 like everyone else. So this is, these items relate to what's been referred to as the Airport Authority's Project 80, and the subject of these series of applications is property that's located at the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road, and that property was first acquired by the Airport Authority in 1986, but has sat dormant in that location. It's in unincorporated Celine County and has remained zoned agricultural. And this annexation request is in the first of a number of related agenda items on your agenda this afternoon related to the property and the proposed project, and those include a companion request to rezone the property, a request to utilize special assessment financing to finance the construction of public streets and utilities, and then a request for approval of a development agreement that would allow the installation of sidewalks and curb and gutter on Waterwell Road to be deferred. I did want to note that attached to the packet on the annexation is a written request from Celine County, taking note of the fact that if, if the roadways west of Centennial Road and Waterwell is annexed, that that would leave a gap in the area that's not annexed and would be going from city to county to city maintenance. And I just wanted to point out that that particular segment, the underlying landowner of that segment of roadway is the Doug Bradley Trust, and so to annex that, we would need to work with Mr. Bradley and obtain his consent to have that annexed. And so if you're supportive of that request, we will work with Mr. Bradley to try to obtain his consent, but that is not a companion annexation item this evening. Except for some industrial exceptions, the city's longstanding policy is not to allow the extension of city utilities to development outside the city, but to require that property that's seeking the use of city utilities be annexed into the city. So that is part of the reason for this request is that the Airport Authority would like to access city utilities and receive full municipal services for a proposed industrial subdivision at this intersection. And as I noted, the annexation area does include the abutting right of way for Waterwell Road. And the other thing I would note is that this is contiguous, which means it's, it's touching on the existing city limits. Therefore, there's no special statutory notice or hearing requirements, and no action needs to be taken by the county commission. You can act on this request this evening. As far as how this is situated, there's an existing 16-inch public water main that runs down Waterwell Road that runs all the way west out to the Burma Road Water Tower, but it does reduce to 12 inches at Scanlon. And there are also a number of other 12-inch lines in the vicinity, and so there are other lines to tie into to provide adequate fire flows and to sources of supply. As far as sanitary sewer, there is a sewer manhole near the intersection of Centennial Road and Vortex Drive, and the Airport Authority's design engineer and the city's utility director have confirmed that this property can be served by a gravity sewer by tying into that manhole. And so we, we noted that Waterwell Road is one perimeter street and Centennial Road is the other. Waterwell Road was recently resurfaced in 2013, and it does meet the city's interim standard. Centennial Road is a dirt road and is considered a minimum maintenance road by the county. We don't have any territorial issues with Evergy and rural cooperatives or any water, rural water district issues, so we have no boundaries that need to be adjusted as a result of this annexation. And as far as storm drainage, the engineers working for the Airport Authority have proposed an onsite detention system for this area. If we look at what's around this, the Airport Industrial Center, the original is directly to the north. The Douglas F. Bradley Trust, they own 280 acres, starting at Waterwell Road and running south on the east side of Centennial Road, and they also own the property at the northeast corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road. So almost all the property to the east of this is owned by the same owner, the Doug Bradley Trust. In terms of what the cost might be to the city if this were annexed, we would have maintenance costs associated with maintaining public streets and public utility lines in the annexed area, but the city would benefit from the collection of additional property tax, sales tax, and franchise tax. When the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2010, this area was identified as an expansion area for the Airport Industrial Area and a potential annexation area. So this annexation would be consistent with that. The Planning Commission looked at this request on July the 2nd, and after reviewing the request and hearing from the Airport Authority, they voted eight to zero to recommend that this property be annexed into the corporate limits of the city. And so an ordinance has been prepared that would do that, and your first option would be to approve ordinance number 24-11213, and that ordinance would annex 80.42 acres at the southwest corner of Waterwell and Centennial into the city. That would allow us to, allow them to connect to city utilities, and also bring this property under the jurisdiction of the city for plan review for police and fire response. You could postpone consideration of the Airport Authority's request to a future meeting to allow the Airport Authority or staff to provide additional information about the annexation request, or you could decline to approve ordinance number 24-11213. That would leave this property outside the city limits. And I noted as a, as a follow-up item, if you want to provide guidance or direction to us on the county's request, if you're supportive of that, then we would proceed with working with Mr. Bradley to get that area described and obtain his consent to bring the roadway into the city to eliminate that gap. So with that, I'm open to any questions. I did put a map that we created in your packet that just shows you what on Waterwell Road's in the city, what's not in the city, so that you can see the, the gap in jurisdiction there.
Questions? I have one. Mr. Toish slipped out, but who currently does snow removal and treatment on that stretch of road? I know it's a pretty important stretch connecting to landfill. Is that the county's or the city's?
I, I think it's a, it's a cooperative venture because it's one of those situations that we have where the north half of Waterwell Road, abutting Slina, Vortex, and that's in the city, and the south half is in the county. So I think it's, there's, in my understanding, those situations before, it's kind of negotiated at the staff level as, as to who does what and when it's bisected like that. But currently, the north half's in the city and the south half's in the county.
Yeah, and that kind of confused me. I, I hope the city truck didn't go down the north half and turn around. Hopefully, they work together.
I, I know we do. I just don't know what the outcome of that particular road segment is, but we, we do horse trade, for lack of a better word, of what makes sense. You take that, we'll take this.
Okay. Any comments from the Airport Authority? Bring any public comment?
Northern Manal Salina, I never thought I'd see the day eminent domain. We've become a communist country. You're going to take everybody's property, and you're doing it. I never thought I'd see the day, but we've become a communist country, eminent domain. They'll take it. They're going to take yours. They're going to take yours. They're going to take yours.
Any other comment? Bring this back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 24-11213 annexing 80.42 acre tract into the city. This would allow development along the site to connect to, to public utilities and bring the site under the administrative, excuse me, regulatory and law enforcement jurisdiction of the city, and would ensure the emergency response to the site is provided by the Salina Police and Fire Departments during development.
Second.
I have a motion a second to approve ordinance number 24-11213 annexing this 80.42 acre tract into the city. I'm not going to read the whole thing. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero. Item 6.2B.
Anyone want to follow up on that second part of that?
Pertaining to Bradley?
Yeah.
So how do you want us to proceed with that?
What I'd offer up is unless you tell us otherwise, we'll proceed with the annexation of that road segment and return it to you when the additional action items associated with this come back to you.
I'll get.
We just need to figure out what interest we, the public has there and work with the city surveyors to come up with a description so that you know what we're annexing, because we're just focused on the roadway at this time.
Item 6.2B.
Item 6.2B is to approve ordinance number 24-11214 changing the zoning district classification of a 77.26 acre tract of land on the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road from Celine, Celine County Agricultural to I-3.
Mr. Andrew.
Just to clarify, even reading my own material, we, I go back and forth between 80.42 acres and 77.26 acres, but the, the reason for that is that the 80.42 includes all the street right of way, and so there's actually 77 acres of developable ground on this property. But by way of background, back in 1988, the Airport Authority initiated plans to develop a 160-acre industrial park at the northwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road to be known as the Airport Industrial Center subdivision, and they submitted a similar set of applications then as being done now, and that property was annexed. It was rezoned to I-3 heavy industrial and platted, and by the end of 1988, that 160-acre tract had been brought into the city and platted, and for the most part, except for the property that you discussed earlier this evening, most of that subdivision is nearing full buildout. At the same time as that was occurring, the Airport Authority purchased property on the south side of Waterwell Road opposite the Airport Industrial Center, and they purchased that with an eye towards potential expansion for their industrial park on the north side. So they now have interest in industrial project, prospect that's interested in locating on the south side of Waterwell Road, and they filed applications to annex, rezone, and plat this property. And they are requesting that it be rezoned to I-3 to match the zoning that's on the north side of Waterwell Road, and that I-3 zoning would accommodate most warehouse and manufacturing type uses. And so I-3 is the most intensive zoning district the city has, so except for a few things like explosive storage and things like that, almost any industrial use would be permitted by right. This is mostly rolling and cleared farm ground. There's only a few trees along fence lines. The high point of this property is actually on the far northwest corner, then it slopes back to the east. There's no floodplain designation or airport runway clear zone designation on the property, so it is suitable for industrial development. It's directly adjacent to an industrial park across the street and surrounded by farmland on the other sides. There are adequate public utilities in place, or they can be readily extended to serve the site. This property is already being served right across the street with police and fire protection, so it's not, not a stretch geographically on those service areas. The comprehensive plan shows this as part of the Airport Industrial Area Employment Hub, so the I-3 zoning designation is, is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the long-range plan for this area. So the Planning Commission reviewed this request at their July 2nd meeting. They also recommended eight to zero that the zoning map be amended to change the zoning of this property to I-3 heavy industrial, subject to satisfactory plating of the property. And so this comes to you with a recommendation for approval. That was turned into ordinance 24-11214, and so your options and the zoning request would be to concur with the findings and recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve that ordinance this evening. You could disagree with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and return it back to them, together with the reason for your disagreement. So for example, if you thought that I-3 was too intense and too great a change and a lesser change to I-2 or I-1 should be considered, then you could send it back to the Planning Commission with three votes. You could postpone consideration this evening to a future meeting date if you feel like additional information is needed to take action, or you could overturn the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny the application, and that would require four votes to not, to deny the request. I wanted to note, because this is greenfield and un- I wanted to note, because this is greenfield and unplatted property, if this ordinance is approved, it would be published, but it would not take legal effect until unless the airport authority completes the plating of the property. So it's approved, subject to them completing the plating of the property. They've had a preliminary plat approved. They have filed a final plat application, but the zoning would be passed but not take effect until there's a approved final plat. So with that, I'd be open to any questions you have about zoning.
Well, I would like to hear from the airport authority, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Miller, Peter Miller, the new director of Salina Airport Authority. Welcome to the Salina City Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Longbine Council. So I guess, what would you like to know about it? So I can say a little bit that I've been in the position as the executive director of the Salina Airport Authority for three weeks now. So that being said, I actually have been working out at the airport under Tim Rogers as the deputy executive director since October of this year. And I can say it was the second week of January when a project opportunity came up and they handed to me, and they said, oh, by the way, we've got a potential tenant in the south 80 acres of the Airport Industrial Park. Come up with a project name and let's get that 80 acres developed. So that's where a little bit of the background of the Project 80 came from. So I can speak a little bit, too, that we do have a potential tenant, that we're working through some negotiations with a purchase agreement for the northwest 20 acres of that Project 80 development, which is, you know, as I mentioned, which is kind of driving all this that we have in front of everybody. It also ties pretty well into what we listened to a little bit ago with Superior. We're full, the Salina Airport, for the most part. I think we still have a 13-acre tract available as part of that original Airport Industrial Park to the north. However, we have had an aerospace company ask questions, and we're actually on a consideration list for another aerospace company moving to the Salina Airport. We won't know about that till later in the year, probably the first of 2025, but if that project does go as well, then yeah, there is no developable space out at the airport. So it kind of makes sense that we're moving forward with the Project 80 here. We can, I don't know how much detail you'd like, but we are looking at developing the Project 80 in two phases. Phase one includes the extension of Scanlon Avenue to about the middle of the 80 acres, and then Swanson Avenue to the west. That would be phase one, and phase one also includes utilities for the entire 80 acres and interim drainage improvements for the entire 80 acres as part of phase one. Phase two, as the acreage starts to fill up and there's more interest, will include Swanson Avenue extending to the east, along with the south extension of Centennial Avenue to, or Centennial Road to meet that as well. So that's kind of the, forgive the pun, that's the 30,000-foot view of what we're doing in Project 80, so.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Bring this back for action.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 24-11214, changing the zoning district classification of a 77.26 acre tract of land on the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road from Celine County Agriculture to I-3 heavy industrial.
Second?
Of motion is second to approve ordinance number 24-11214, changing the zoning district classification of a 77.26 acre tract of land on the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road from Celine County Agriculture to I-3 heavy industrial. May we have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ivy?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Mayor Longbine?
Aye.
Carries four zero. Item 6.3.
Item 6.3 authorize city staff preparation of a special assessment engineering feasibility report for internal improvements serving the proposed Airport Industrial Center number three subdivision, also known as Project 80.
Mr. Andrew?
This is related to the same piece of property at the southwest corner of Waterwell Road and Centennial Road. We've talked about annexing it into the city. We've talked about zoning and plating. A companion item to that is how the public infrastructure to support the subdivision would be financed, and the airport authority has submitted an application requesting approval to form a special assessment benefit district to improve Centennial Road to city street standards, and also to install extension of public water lines and sewer lines and internal streets to serve this 80-acre tract. And so this is step one of a two-step special assessment financing process, and if you approve the airport authority's request this evening, it authorizes city staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report for serving this subdivision, which would come back to you for further review. It does not, any action tonight doesn't actually create the benefit district. And so we've summarized on page one the various steps that we're at to make this project happen, and so we've done annexation, zoning, we discussed plating. This is step one of the use of special assessment financing. The next step would be to come back with a feasibility report and a benefit district petition, and of course, the final step is actually constructing the streets and utility lines. And as Mr. Miller mentioned, the plan is to put the infrastructure in in phases and basically develop this from west to east, and so this property has a half mile of frontage on Waterwell Road and a quarter mile of frontage on Centennial Road, and so the access into the proposed development would be from individual driveways on Waterwell Road, as well as from the two internal streets, Scanlon Avenue and Swanson Drive. And those two streets will be city streets. They'll be designed to city street standards with curb and gutter and sidewalks, and they'll be built in phase one to provide secondary access points to the lot in the northwest corner. And so that lot in the northwest corner would have frontage on Waterwell, Scanlon, and Swanson. The Waterwell Road situation is that it meets the city's interim street standard as to width and pavement thickness, but it doesn't have curb and gutter, and it doesn't have sidewalks, and there's a request, a companion request, to allow improvements to Waterwell Road to be deferred through a development agreement on a following agenda item. The timing of improvements to Centennial Road will be addressed as part of the benefit district that the airport authority is proposing to form to finance those improvements. And so as Mr. Miller mentioned, the east leg of Swanson Drive and the reconstruction of Centennial Road will be deferred to phase two. I've already discussed the existing water supply. The plan would be to bring a looped line that would come from a 12-inch line west of Scanlon. It would come through the subdivision, go down Swanson Drive from west to east, go over to Centennial Road, and then loop back up Centennial Road to tie to an existing line. And so that would create a loop with two sources of flow. As far as the sanitary sewer, they would start at the west edge of the subdivision, run a sewer line down Swanson Drive from west to east, and then that sewer line would run up Centennial Road and tie up to a manhole and vortex drive. And so the design and construction of those improvements would be the responsibility of the airport authority, and I think we, I summarized on page three in a little more detail that phase one would consist of construction of Scanlon Avenue and Swanson Drive, including curb and gutter and sidewalks, extension of the waterline loop in its entirety, extension of the sewer line loop in its entirety, and then construction of interim detention areas. When they got to phase two, they would finish the design and construction of Centennial Road south of Waterwell. They would extend Swanson Drive to the east from Scanlon to connect to Centennial Road, and then they would construct a permanent detention basin. So under the policy that was adopted by the city commission in 2018, the first step is to allow, provide information to the commission to allow you to review the request for special assessment financing, ask any questions that you would want clarified, and then provide direction about the use of that financing tool. And so before they go any farther, the airport authority would like your approval to utilize specials to finance the construction of these improvements. And so this is a little different than a residential subdivision, because we're not talking about price points and market prices and things of that nature, but we're talking about 3,900 lineal feet of 12-inch waterline, 3,600 feet of sewer line, and approximately 1,600 lineal feet of new concrete street paving. The estimated cost for the improvements for phase one is 4.3 million, and the total project cost, including Centennial Road, would be 6.9 million, and we've attached cost estimates prepared by Wilson and Company to the report. Again, the maintenance for the city would be the public utility lines and the internal public streets, and so in terms of impact on the city's debt limit and debt capacity, we noted that the city is currently at 36% of its debt limit. If you take this project, a companion request for the airport terminal project and the Liberty Edition Number Three that you approved earlier this month, those taken together would increase that to 40% of our debt capacity. We've provided information about how the special assessment process works, and so this is designed just for you to gain more information about the project and decide whether you want to have staff spend the time to prepare a feasibility report on the public improvements. So there's no ordinance or resolution associated with this, but your options on page 11 of your report would be to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for the Airport Industrial Center number three subdivision or Project 80 for your future consideration. You could postpone consideration of the airport authority's request to a future meeting date and provide additional direction to staff or the airport authority. You could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparation of an engineering feasibility report for this project at this time. So we've provided a map and a number of attachments, but the request is the airport authority would like to utilize special assessment financing to finance the water, sewer, and public streets needed to support this development.
Questions for Mr. Andrew?
One just regarding the debt limit. I don't know if you, I guess Ms. Pax is not here. Yes, she is. Do you know how many more requests are in the pipeline for 2024, or how much may be coming off that debt limit in the next year? Nothing really coming off anytime soon?
I would divide it into two categories, really. As part of the budget conversation, we had, we provided information about kind of our typical debt and our debt mill rate dedicated to debt, and then that payoff schedule. And then you have special assessment debt, which is secured by the special assessments. And I think I've shared with you before that, and Ms. Pax can correct me if I'm wrong, but if our practice was to issue those two forms of debt separately, this wouldn't necessarily count towards our debt limit. It's not very practical. It actually incurs additional issuance costs, but if we were so inclined, we could issue special assessment debt separately, and then that would not have the net effect that we're reporting here today. And I'm speculating a little bit, but I think that is because of the distinction between debt that we would issue that's subject to payment by just general, mill rate-funded general fund property tax revenue, and then special assessment debt that's secured essentially by assessments against the property. That's not to say that if a property defaulted, that they couldn't default on those specials, but at that point, that becomes a lien. It puts the property subject to foreclosure, and theoretically, it would be purchased, and those specials would be paid by the subsequent owner that purchased it at foreclosure sale.
When we are rated for bond issuance, does the raider separate those two types of debt?
No. As we go out to a bond issuance, it's a combined bond issuance, so our AA3 rating is applicable to both.
Right by me. As far as our debt worthiness, one of the debts we're not actually paying, the owner of the special assessment is paying, but because we issue them together, they count as...
Right. They look at that as one combined issuance, yes.
But no one said we're getting too high on our percentage of...
That's a consideration with the bond rating, and we are in that upper tier of bond ratings, and I think the AA3 rating's about fourth from the top, if I remember correctly.
Okay. That's it.
That's my question, as we add to that debt limit. Does some of that debt drop off, get paid off and off the books to where it kind of balances out?
Yes. In fact, if you recall, one of the budget slide conversa, slides that was a point of discussion was just that, what's our debt level? What are the amortization schedules of those debts? And then you may recall that there's capacity for a million or $2 million in any given year, and then there was a year that had about $8 million with a debt capacity, and one of the things that we as staff had said is we were trying to level that out so that we kind of have some rolling debt capacity without the need to have the mill rate fluctuate from year to year. So in answer to your question, as is currently planned, we don't see a spike that causes a need for a mill rate increase. As debt gets paid off, that'll create a little bit of capacity that you or a future governing body could apply to future projects if you chose.
The only other thing to note was that our, most of our recent requests have been to have a repayment schedule over 20 years, and in the past, they've been 10 years or 15 years. So the ones that are 10 or 15 years are coming off, are getting paid off, but these most recent requests have been for 20 years of financing, so.
Does the airport authority have any comment on this item? You're well represented here. Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor, I authorize the staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for Airport Industrial Center number three subdivision, phases one and two, for future consideration by the city commission as requested.
Second?
Of motion is second to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and Resinuslan resolution of advisability for Airport Industrial Center number three subdivision, phases one and two, for future consideration by the city commission as requested. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries four zero. Does anyone need to take a short break?
How much more do we have here? Yes, five minutes.
Five-minute break?
Yeah.
Okay. I concur. We'll take a five-minute break and be back here at 6:10.
Okay, we are back in session and refreshed, ready to continue with item 6.4.
Item 6.4, authorize city staff preparation of a special assessment engineering feasibility report for the relocation of a water line at the Salina Regional Airport Terminal Building.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a similar request to what you just heard in item 6.3, but this is for a different project, and so the airport authority has submitted a separate special assessment application requesting that the city commission authorize the use of special assessments to finance the relocation of an existing public water line that's currently located at the rear of the terminal, airport terminal building at 3237 Arnold Road. And so there's a expansion and renovation project being proposed for the airport terminal, and there's a 12-inch public water line that runs behind the terminal building that's in the way of the expansion. And so the airport authority's engineers are proposing to reroute the water line away from behind the terminal and down Bailey Road and around the terminal building, and they would like to finance this project through the use of special assessments. So we have provided a vicinity map depicting the location of the project and showing the existing and proposed routes of that water line. And so if this request is approved, it would only authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report for that water line relocation. It would not authorize the creation of a benefit district. And staff understanding that the Salina Airport Authority has received an $8 million grant from the FAA to expand the terminal building, I've kind of summarized what some of those improvements are. I think I'll defer to the airport authority to better explain what those would entail, but suffice it to say that there's a 12-inch water line that's directly behind the terminal building, and that impacts the ease in which they can add on to the back, and the covered concourse that runs back there already crosses over that water line. And it's also staff's understanding that the FAA grant does not include the cost of relocating that water line, so the airport authority is wanting to use special assessment financing so those relocation cost payments can be made over time. And so we've summarized that we're talking about 1,020 lineal feet of 12-inch water line. There's an estimated cost to that project of about $304,000. All of that cost would be assessed to the airport authority as the owner of the terminal building site, and as noted, the FAA grant doesn't cover any of that. And so the airport authority would either have the option of entering into a development agreement as part of the benefit district creation to allow them to select the contractors and administer this project themselves, or they could choose to have the city put the project out to bid, which would mean the city would administer the project. So in terms of additional maintenance, this route will be slightly longer, so there's a little more additional lineal feet of water line the city would be maintaining, but it would also be taking an existing line out of service that we will no longer maintain, so it's not a large net increase in maintenance responsibility. The number we used in our report as it relates to debt limit was for this. Looking at this project only, it would increase the debt limit by less than 1% because it's only $304,000 project. And so again, this is a two-step process for special assessments. This is step one, and so your options in response to the airport authority's request would be, one, to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for the relocation project for future consideration. You could postpone consideration of the airport authority's request to a future meeting date and provide additional direction to the airport authority and staff about what information you might be wanting, or you could vote to instruct staff not to proceed with preparing an engineering feasibility report at this time and direct staff and the airport authority to look at other options. But this is an identical request. It's a different project and different, but it would be the same in terms of special assessment bond financing to allow this to be paid off over time. So with that, I'll answer any questions about the water line relocation. I'll defer any questions about the terminal renovations to the airport authority staff.
Questions for Mr. Andrew?
No.
Airport authority would like to brief us on this.
Sure. Good evening again. Peter Miller, Executive Director of the Salina Airport Authority. So Dean was correct. We have received, or will be receiving, an $8 million grant from the FAA through several different funding mechanisms that include a rather, actually rather large expansion and renovation of the existing terminal building at the Salina Airport. This renovation and expansion includes a 4,000-square-foot hold facility. That's after passengers pass through the TSA screening area. That's where they wait at the gate for the aircraft to arrive. It's also where passengers coming in off the aircraft, you know, walk through the holding area as well when they exit the building. That's phase one. Phase two is actually a new two-lane screening area for the TSA, and that's actually the part of the project that triggers the need to move the water line, where we're going to expand the TSA screening area. We'll go right over the top of that. Obviously, that's, you know, against code, and it doesn't make any sense to do that, so that triggered the reason for moving the water line. The phase three and some of the following phases two include back-of-house ticketing area for SkyWest Airlines, as well as baggage claim on the south end of the airfield. Phases four and five, we're pretty confident that there won't be enough budget for those projects. However, there are other funding mechanisms that we might be able to add these in later. That includes pickup and drop-off lanes with a new canopy in the front of the building, as well as a backup generator system so that the terminal can continue to operate in power outage-type situations. So the project itself actually was scheduled to open bids. It's been out to bid for the last three weeks. We were supposed to open bids this Wednesday, upcoming Wednesday, because of some contractor questions and some other addendums that we've had to put on to the project. We've now pushed that bid opening back till a week from today, actually. So that gives our finance director exactly 24 hours to apply for the federal grant once we know how much it's going to cost. So it'll be a busy couple of days next week, but that's kind of the overview of where we're at on the terminal building. The passenger, the design for the passenger is up to 48,000 passengers a year is what the design criteria is for these expansions, so we've got to have plenty of room to grow after this expansion.
So this project is ready to get underway pretty quick, then?
Yeah, very much so. So we have to have the grant application into the FAA by July 31st. Once that's in place and we are awarded the notice to proceed, then we can bring the contractor onboard pretty much as soon as we can get him there.
And on the special assessments, do you have any idea of what you're going to ask for? Like Mr. Andrew said, the norm is 20 years now on the payment.
On the term? I'll probably, I'm not sure we're going to need 20 years on the term for the special assessment for that water line. I don't want to put, I don't want to put words in my finance director's mouth, but probably the 10-year term, I would think, if I do the math right, probably makes the most sense on that project, so. She nodded, so that's what I'll say.
I'm looking forward to driving down Swanson Drive. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Your predecessor briefed me on this project a couple of months ago, and so I was glad he did. He took me under his wing, so to speak.
Very good, so.
Thank you. Any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move this governing body authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for the Salina Airport Authority Water Line Relocation Project for future consideration by the City Commission as requested.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to authorize staff to prepare an engineering feasibility report and resolution of advisability for the Salina Airport Authority Water Line Relocation Project for future consideration by the City Commission as requested. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. And we'll continue with the airport authority. Item 6.5.
Item 6.5, approve a development agreement with the Salina Airport Authority addressing current and future sidewalk and street improvements to Waterwell Road abutting the Airport Industrial Center Number Three subdivision.
Mr. Andrew.
This is the final airport authority item, I promise. It's the same 80.42-acre tract southwest corner of Waterwell and Centennial Road, and as we discussed previously, this proposed subdivision has a half-mile of frontage on Waterwell Road, and Waterwell Road, in terms of its paving thickness and its driving width, meets the city's interim standard, but this segment of Waterwell Road lacks curb and gutter, and it also lacks sidewalk, which are required elements of the city's public street standard. And so in our meetings with representatives of the airport authority at the development review team level and the planning commission, they indicated that they would like to proceed with developing this subdivision and not have to upgrade Waterwell Road as part of the development of Project 80, and asked that their request to defer improvements be referred to the City Commission. So I think you're familiar with this development agreement as a tool which has been used where we have these rural street segments that are in good shape as far as drivability, but lack some of the elements to be a complete city street. And just some information that the Waterwell Road was reconstructed in 1995 as a landfill haul route, and then this same section of Waterwell Road abutting the subdivision was resurfaced in 2013 as part of a city-county cost-share agreement for an overlay. We're talking about 2,647 lineal feet of curb and gutter. We're talking about the same distance for a public sidewalk. We would need the sidewalk to bring it to even an interim standard, and we'd need the curb and gutter to bring it to a full city standard. And so the request from the airport authority is to allow those items to be deferred through the terms of a development agreement. And so this is not a waiver. It's a deferral. And so Waterwell Road is a minor arterial street. It's a two-lane section, and so consistent with the other similar two-lane sections in South Ninth Street and other sections of Waterwell Road. The Institute of Transportation Engineers indicates that when a two-lane road gets to 7,500 vehicles per day, it's at a Level of Service C, and so that would be the triggering event for considering upgrading Waterwell Road to a full city standard. East of Centennial Road, the traffic count is 2,800 vehicles a day. That traffic count gets lower west of Centennial Road because most of the traffic is using Centennial to go north. And so there was a change made in 2023 that also allowed sidewalks to be deferred. So this is a non-residential subdivision. This development agreement allows those improvements to be deferred. The attached development agreement that's before you would, the improvements to abutting Waterwell Road would be deferred until the traffic count on Waterwell Road exceeds 7,500 vehicles a day. The construction of the public sidewalk would be deferred until the city has built out a public sidewalk network along Waterwell Road which reaches the airport authority's property. We wanted to point out that the way these agreements are structured, neither of those triggering events are just automatic. What would occur is that when those triggers are met, we would notify the City Commission, and the City Commission would still retain the discretion as to when to initiate and how to initiate those improvements. The other thing we would note is the way that these development agreements are drafted and constructed, that they were intended to be recorded and run with the land, so if you're a prospective lot purchaser, you are aware of this development agreement if you're researching the title to the property. So your options this evening would be to approve the proposed development agreement with Salina Airport Authority and authorize the mayor to sign that agreement. You could approve the agreement with any amendments that you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration of that development agreement to a future meeting date to allow major revisions to be made or obtain additional information, or you could vote to deny approval of the development agreement and provide additional direction to the airport authority and to staff. So those would be the alternatives, and so this has been similar to what was done on North Ohio for the Beck's project and for the Kansas Gas Project and the old Harley-Davidson. We had a similar agreement on South Ninth Street with the Augustine Edition, so this is consistent with those agreements.
Questions for Mr. Andrew?
When they go to phase two on Centennial Road, will that have to be brought to interim street standards?
It will be built to a full public street standard, so there won't be an interim on Centennial Road. It will go from a dirt road to a full city street, so it won't be an interim phase. So when they decide that they want to bring Swanson Drive over and tie it all together, then Centennial Road will be designed and built with curb and gutter and sidewalks at the time. There wouldn't be an interim phase.
I have an unrelated question, maybe, since we're out there. Can anyone update me on the Centennial Road project at Waterwell?
I was told this morning that it's open.
It's open.
Yeah, I don't know if it opened today or previously, but I was told this morning it's open.
It was Saturday, Friday or Saturday it was open.
Well, how about that? Any comments from the, we've heard this, like Mr. Andrew said, this is about the fourth or fifth time on the sidewalks from the airport authority. And bring this, any public comment? Bring this back for action.
Mayor, move approval of the proposed development agreement with the Salina Airport Authority addressing current and future sidewalk and street improvements to Waterwell Road abutting the Airport Industrial Center Number Three subdivision.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve a development agreement with the Salina Airport Authority addressing current and future sidewalk and street improvements to Waterwell Road abutting the Airport Authority Industrial Center Number Three subdivision. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. Airport authority made a lot of progress today. Mr. Rogers will be proud of us. Hope he's watching. Item 6.6.
Item 6.6, approve a development agreement with Southlands Development LLC addressing current and future sidewalk and street improvements to Waterwell Road abutting the Windy Creek Edition.
Mr. Andrew.
So much of what I just discussed relating to the airport authority property that is located at the southwest corner of Centennial and Waterwell, this property is located at the northwest corner of Waterwell and I-135. And Southlands Development, which is Jake Bradley, the operating operations manager, owns a large tract of land at that northwest corner. They have a contract to sell a piece of property there to a business that wants to construct a convenience store and travel plaza. They also have submitted a preliminary plat for the south 55 of that, 55 acres of that property, which has frontage on Waterwell Road. Again, Waterwell Road is in good shape as far as driving surface and driving width, but it lacks curb and gutter and sidewalks. So this is an identical request to defer the improvements relating to installation of curb and gutter and sidewalks. The terms are identical to the item you just considered, and so the attached development agreement would defer those improvements, and under the terms of the agreement with Southlands Development, the improvements to Waterwell Road would be deferred until traffic counts on Waterwell exceed 7,500 vehicles a day. There would be no public sidewalks required until the city's public sidewalk network along Waterwell Road reaches the Windy Creek property. Those triggering events are not automatic. The City Commission would still retain the discretion as to when and how to initiate those street improvements, and this development agreement is designed to be recorded and run with the land so that the convenience store purchaser or anybody else who was purchasing land out there would know that this development agreement exists. So with that, I'd be open. Any questions? Your alternatives are the same. The first would be to approve the development agreement as drafted and presented and authorize the mayor to sign it. You could suggest possible amendments to the agreement as presented. You could postpone consideration of this item to a future meeting date to allow revisions to be made, or you could vote to deny approval of the development agreement as presented. So I do believe we have Mr. Hobbie here representing Jake Bradley, but again, this has become somewhat standardized, and the terms are identical to the item that you just considered.
Questions for Mr. Andrew? Does Mr. Hobbie have any comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Gary Hobbie, Salina, Kansas, representing the Southlands Development here on Windy Creek Edition. We have gone through a process of vetting the probability of eliminating a development agreement, but the costs came in a little bit higher than we anticipated, so we'd like to move forward and get your blessings and move forward with the development agreement today. I also know that the previous items we've been discussing about the annexation of Waterwell Road, I know that the Bradley family is more than willing to sit down and talk to the city about the process it'll take to do that and complete that process. So I'd be open. Any questions you have?
Questions? Thank you. Any public comment?
Mayor, I move that we approve the proposed development agreement with Southlands Development LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the proposed development agreement with Southlands Development LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 4-0. And that brings us to other business. Any item a commissioner would like to bring up? I have one. In our packet had information memorandum, and this week's came from Jeff Hammond, Parks and Recreation, and a lot of information in here, and I'd encourage people to, I guess it's online at the top of the packet, see what all's went on in the Parks and Rec Department. It's four pages full, and we've made a lot of progress, wrapped up some projects, and they're doing a good job, so we take pride in our parks. Bring us to citizens forum. Anyone who has a comment not on the agenda pertaining to city business, please limit your comments to three minutes. I see none. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries 4-0. Thank you.